We'll call the meeting ordered now. The first, the second agenda item is citizen comments. This would be comments about things that are not on the work session discussion. Are there any citizens that need to make any comments? Seeing none, we'll progress on to items three, four, five, and six. And if there's no opposition, we'll take those as a group, which involve a permit for special events, jingle bell run, children organ transplant, 5K run, my father's house Cinco de Mayo, and the heritage ball. Is there any discussion needed there? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number seven, discussion regarding sales tax proposal. And I understand that we have a number of county commissioners and county dignitaries with us tonight. I think Doug Langston is here, and Greg Davis, Bob Barnwell, Kathy Danner, Jack Walton, who's the chairman, and Pat Anderson, who's the chairman of the school board. And then we have David Coleman, and Mike Looney, and Mayor Anderson that are going to come up and discuss it. So did I miss anybody?
You already skipped number four.
Yeah. You passed.
Yep.
Well, it has to be one.
It should be one. Seven o'clock meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, make sure she knows.
I think you've got a good chance that...
It's gonna be fine.
We're fine.
You want to be here? Yeah. Let's come up here.
Can you go here?
Yeah. Have a seat.
Did you change your foot out of seven on the consent? Consent too.
Yes, okay. So... Welcome.
Well, thank you.
I just finished being in a meeting with you, and I'm glad to see you again.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you introducing everybody, Mayor and Alderman, and our purpose here tonight. And I'd like to have three people speak specifically, and then we'll address any of your questions. The sole purpose of us being here tonight, the county commissioners will be voting on a resolution on Monday night to increase the sales tax at their county commission meeting. During the committee meetings that we've had, I have been asked and instructed to approach each of the cities in Williamson County about the amount of increase that we're having is .5, that the city's share of that go back to the public education side for a window, a period of time. The detail, all the details, we have not worked out, but to conceptually come to you and ask for your approval for that period of time to help with the funding of public education here in Williamson County, which we will be making the same journey to each of, each and all of our cities throughout the county, Brentwood, Spring Hill, Compton Station, Olensville, Fairview.
Did I leave one out? Spring Hill.
Spring Hill.
Spring Hill.
All of them. We will be approaching them. Raising the sales tax, that is before the county commissioners at the Monday night meeting, will generate some eight million, approximately eight million dollars for the school side. Likewise, that share, wherever that sales tax is generated in that municipality or in the county, that that money would go back to the appropriate municipality, which I'm sure you all are well aware of that. So if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor, if I could have two people to come up and once to touch on the educational needs of what we're doing in Williamson County, and I brought, I did not ask David Snowden, which would be a part of this, but Dr. Mike Looney is sitting back there, and if he'd make his way up here to kind of give you the overview and the programs and the direction and what they've been experiencing from an educational standpoint. And then I'll ask David Coleman to come up and give some of the numbers and feel comfortable. And this shouldn't take just a few minutes.
Right. Thank you. Hey, Dr. Looney, go ahead and introduce yourself.
I'm Mike Looney. I'm the director of schools. I'm sorry. I'm Mike Looney. I'm the director of schools for Williamson County. We appreciate your consideration of this matter. Obviously, the school board stands with the mayor and the county commission, and this objective and that objective is pretty simple, and that is to adequately fund the school system, the county school system, and the special school district, in a manner that allows us to continue to operate and provide the quality of services that we have enjoyed for the past several decades. The county board of education is currently considering a $239 million budget. And that budget represents about a 6% increase over the previous year. We're also, about a 6% increase over the previous year. And it might be, you know, I don't have the exact percentage, but about a 6%. And so we have a 5% increase in the number of schools that we're going to be operating next year. We're adding two new schools that will open in the fall. But for the past several years, our school system has been working really hard with the county commission to keep our budget to bare bones, so much so that we've delayed purchasing textbooks in some cases. We've laid off some, certified some classroom teachers in the past and central office staff members to try to build a budget within the parameters that the county commission had given us. And we have reached a point, in my professional opinion, where we're at a crossroads. If we continue with the limited resources that we have, then this community is going to begin to see the impact, the educational impact, from a lack of resources. And so from our perspective, it's imperative that we move forward with a budget that's adequate to fund the needs of the district. And that ranges from providing the staffing necessary in our schools, to providing the resources such as textbooks, to provide the programming, in particular in math and reading, that will allow us to stay at the forefront of the state in educational achievement.
Mayor, if you would let me let David Coleman come up, and I'll give up my seat and just kind of move over here, then we'll come back and address any, again, move down there. This is called musical chairs, see, I don't know what y'all call it in the county.
Be sure that everybody can hear, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Speak up into that.
Introduce yourself, David.
My name is David Coleman. I'm budget director for Williamson County Government, and we appreciate you giving us the opportunity to talk to you tonight. I can provide a lot of information as far as numbers. I won't bore you with all that, but we'll answer any questions that you might have. On this road several months ago, we started meeting with the tax study committee and giving them options of ways that we might increase current revenues or generate new revenue for the county. And you've heard Dr. Looney primarily for the schools. And the plan that the tax study committee picked to go with initially was the increase in the sales tax. We looked at 18 counties in the middle Tennessee area that joined Williamson County, and we looked at several taxes, but we looked at the sales tax in those. And there are 10 of the 18 that currently are above us. They're either at 2.5 or 2.75 currently for the local share. And we would be looking to go to the 2.75. There are really two parts to this, as the mayor indicated earlier, and we're using numbers from the county year 2010, so they will be a little bit different, and hopefully there'll be more. The first eight million dollars of local tax generated by this increase would go directly to the operation of the schools, just like it does now of the taxes being collected. And that would certainly be shared with the Franklin Special School District by law. The second half of that, which would go to cities or county, and what we're asking for is the sharing of that over a period of time, and that money would be dedicated through whatever agreement we might have to the payment of debt for schools. All the new schools we've built over the last several years. And one chart I have, which again, we'll be glad to pass those out, but just to give you a brief thing of what we're looking at is, and I know Russ has got this on the city side, the county debt has a level for the next five or six years that we don't get a lot of relief on. And if you want, pass those around there. So this is really what we're looking at. It's about a five-year program that would help us until we get over that limit of debt out there and then get some relief. And whatever agreement we come up with, percentage-wise, about a five-year plan is kind of what we're looking at, Mayor and Board. But it is a two-part plan. The first part, going to the schools, the operation of schools, and whatever part we share will go directly to the debt for paying for the schools.
Questions? Comments?
Ken, if I could put one other thing together, just to let you know that what they're voting on Monday night is to allow the, the county commissioners themselves are not voting for a increase in the sales tax. They're voting to take it to a referendum to the people, and I think you know that. The circle graph I want to draw your attention to is the amount of money that is coming in from major revenue sources on their last year budget. This is the school budget. And their budget last year was around $223 million for the...
Wrong one.
And as you can tell from the funds, that at the local level, we give, you give, I give 66% of those monies. The state of Tennessee, through their return of their sales taxes, the people are spending money in our county and throughout the state, they send us 32%. And the Fed send us 5.5. Now, outside of that 5.5 does not include any RRA funds or special funds that may have been appropriated at the federal level for the last several years. But this is the general makeup of how the funds that come in for the revenue side of schools, that come into our county, to let you know that, that sometimes a lot of people think that Williamson County is getting a lot of money for our public education through the federal system, and then the charts just do not bear that out in any way. So at that time, Mr. Mayor, I'm ready to open up for any of your questions that you may have.
Comments and questions?
I was just going to mention that staff has sat down with both Dr. Looney and Rogers and David to discuss this, just to understand how this might work. And David described it fairly well, that the focus would be on a defined period of time, somewhere around five years, for a defined purpose, to help with that, that sort of bubble of additional debt service costs that's on the debt schedule right now that is a fixed cost that the school system is facing, and that that would be an appropriate place for us to have a positive impact and to move forward. So, you know, once the commission has voted to put this on the ballot, if that happens next week, then we would then have some discussions further with the county about how a conditional interlocal agreement might work between the bodies, you know, conditional on the citizens approving the tax, that we would lay out how that would work specifically and bring that back to you so you could see the details of the arrangement. And obviously, those details would still need to be completely hashed out between all of us, but that would be where we would go in terms of a process standpoint. But I would just comment, the primary economic development strategy of this county has been its public education system. And so we need to look very strongly at how that is supported, both in terms of adequate funding, but also that we've made the appropriate steps in terms of being good stewards of our resources throughout the budget process that we all go through publicly. This board and this city has taken that very seriously. We've reduced our budget 15% in the last two years and done that without layoffs and without service reductions. So it is a challenging time to be in local government and in public service. And so these tough choices are before all of us, and we'll give it all careful consideration and be glad to serve you in any way we can in working through this. But I wanted to just give that, those thoughts to you, and we're glad to answer any questions from our standpoint as well, from city staff.
Alderman, Ken.
I just, can you go over the process of the referendum? Is it countywide? Is it the total for the entire county would make the decision and not entities within the county? And I guess Franklin has the lion's share of the sales tax, so we would commit more than any other entity. Are you comfortable with us having some condition that at least some of the other municipalities would also buy in on this?
Well, let me start with your first question. If it is passed on Monday night, it takes a simple vote of 24 men and women, Monday night, if it gets in the affirmative for 13 votes, then it would go to a referendum. State law says that the referendum must occur within 60 days. So 60 days from this coming Monday night, that actually goes to the election commission. They would pick the date, which that referendum would be throughout the entire Williamson County area. It's not just unique to Franklin or Brentwood. You are correct, I think, if the next thing you ask me, the lion's share would be coming from Franklin. Out of the approximately eight million dollars based on last year, if you had that same scenario, almost five million of that is from Franklin. So as you can probably tell, the smaller cities generate very, very little, but the majority of it is certainly five out of eight years approximately, and a very large sum is Brentwood likewise.
Is the referendum a simple majority? And if, so if that passes, then the county would be able to enact that?
There is a, if, if the referendum is successful at the, and certified by the election commission, then that information is sent to the state. State revenue, that would, who would pay?
The State Department of Revenue, pretty sure, to make the ruling on it, just to, they would look at the referendum, they would look at the resolution that was passed, and then they would, they would approve the tax actually going into place. But they would have to review the whole process.
But there's no other step after the referendum is certified?
To the best of my knowledge, Alderman, there is no other step.
He doesn't see, say something.
Mayor.
Go ahead, Alderman.
If the referendum were to pass, would the county commission then have to take another step to implement it? At that, in other words, at that point, do you have permission or are you committed? Because by then, where I understand what you're talking about, only if it passes do we need to get into the discussion of the details between the various communities, the various municipalities, and the county? I mean, you wouldn't go forward if you didn't have a good faith understanding of how that might work out. But if the referendum passes, then we have to have interlocal agreements. So it wouldn't, the passing of the referendum would not, if I understand correctly, necessarily mean that the sales tax would be raised. It would just mean you could now raise it if we can make this work out. Is that correct, or are you committed once the referendum passes?
If that referendum by the people is in the affirmative, then I think the county commission is saying, go forth.
Okay, but the idea, the idea that is being proposed is basically to temporarily, for the city to temporarily, the various cities, to temporarily waive their claim to that, to those funds.
Okay.
And if the cities did not then, if you could not work that out with Brentwood or Franklin, you would have the same conundrum budget shortfall then as you would now. It'd just be, it'd be less, but you'd still be faced with a problem that you had to do something to solve.
Okay, I follow your question. If, what you're asking me is, do we need to do this memorandum of understanding prior to the election or after the election? I would like to believe that this board is just like our board, that if you give us strong indications that you would go that way, then we would, we would certainly follow up on that. Until the paperwork is never, until the paperwork is signed, there's nothing that we can ever do.
Sure. The reason I ask is because the situation that I do not want to wind up in is you have, we have said, yes, this is something we would consider. The county commission passes the resolution to authorize a referendum, the referendum passes, we then have some breakdown in discussions, and we're committed to a tax hike without, without accomplishing the mission for which we, that we began. I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to participate in a, well, other than as a voter, I wouldn't, but as a, I don't, I don't want to be involved in a process that winds up with a tax, sales tax increase that does not connect. So what I want to know is, can the county commission pull the plug on the tax hike, a sales tax hike, if for some reason you're not able to get buy-in from Brentwood and Franklin? Say you have authority to do it, your referendum passes, but then something happens and you can't get...
That's a legal question. I'll, I'll leave that up to you.
Well, that's one time I was asking a question to which I didn't do.
I gather that, and I certainly don't either.
Alderman, Brentwood.
Okay.
But I'll find out for you.
County Mayor, what if the referendum does not pass? What, what are the plan B?
Well, Dr. Looney has indicated to you that he is asking for 6% to 7% increase. They're 223 on their operating side, they're going to 238. This would generate eight million dollars. It does not fulfill that need. By the participation of the cities, it greatly enhances reaching the objective without having any kind of, having any kind of, none of us in this day and time like increases in taxes. I don't think you'd find any of the county commissioners in any way like that, and that certainly would extend over to me. But as our county continues to grow, Pearl, we have to take a look at why we're in this particular situation. And it's been for the last two or three years, the housing market where the majority of our privileged tax and impact taxes come from is paid for education, so that we've not had to do a property tax increase since 2003. With the housing, the new home starts being, being off the way they have, we did, David's probably got those numbers here, but we've done some very detailed studies, and it's just three short years ago, the privileged tax, the impact, the, call it what you want, was generating about 23 cents worth of property tax or not having to raise those property taxes. When you're, when you're doing a dollar per foot on heating and cooling and another dollar, dollar on the adequate school facility tax, which is $2, that's a lot of money generated for the public, for the services that we render. You all enjoy those same things as we do. I cannot speak for how the county commissioners will react. We have put the budget guidelines out that they're flat, they're zero, except for growth. They have not entertained the school budget yet. That will come up end of this month. I'm sure there's going to be some mashing of teeth, and there'll be some, no, you can't do that, as there always is in any budget processes. But already, we're being told by the school system that next year, there will be 853 kids coming into our system from August, on August of this year over last year's August.
New kids. So having growth.
That's growth. This last year, that we are still receiving children in our system, is already up to... I think it's 31,502, but it changes daily. Which allows me to say this, that in 2002, which is the benchmark that I'm going to use, because that's when I entered office as mayor, we had 20,000 kids. So in eight years, we're up to 32,000 children. Just as our community is growing, our school, school population is growing, just as we have got families that have hurt and have suffered and lost jobs, we're seeing an influx of children come into the school system that maybe they can't continue to pay for the private side. Maybe they're relocating here in some of the apartments and the leases in homes that are generating. Some of those things have got to be occurring in our community. But regardless of what it is, and regardless of how we feel about taxes, we still have an obligation to provide public education for our, for our children. That's not to say I'm not going to look at Dr. Looney, nor is, nor of any of our county commissioners to say, ratchet it down, take it out, we can't live with that. But we're under restrictions of what we can tell him to do. We can, we can say we'll vote for the bottom line, but we're not necessarily going to vote for XXXX. That's just the law. Quite frankly, if the public doesn't see fit to fund the sales tax increase, which would generate the money, that falls back on the property tax.
Thank you very much.
Took a long way to get to it.
I want the public, the people at home to hear that.
Well, Pearl's question about if they vote no, then what will we do? I want to take another approach. How about what we're doing now as a county, as a taxpayer? You know, I'm here as an Alderman tonight, but I'm also a taxpayer. What are we doing as a county government to cut our spending, decrease revenues, before asking for tax increases? The school needs the money. I'm not going to argue that with you at this point. I'm sure there are all types of ways to do cuts, and I'm sure you've addressed some of those, if not all, but there's always out-of-the-box thinking on a lot of these things. But as a county, I expect our leaders to also address these things. And we have, as a city, I know Eric had shared with you tonight, that over two years, we've cut our budget 15%. We've gone from a $60 million budget to a $50 million budget. What is the, what are the commissioners doing to address out-of-the-box thinking, to come up with ways to cut your budget, to bring in extra revenue, and to do these things before coming to the people of this county and the city, these cities in this county, to ask for, number one, possibly property and tax, property tax in the future increase, and right now, the sales tax increase? So I think those are the hard questions we need to be asking, and finding out what that is about, because to me, that's crucial. What has been the budget in the county in 2009, 2010, 2011? Have you increased it? Are you decreasing it? How much have you slashed the budget? How much are you planning on slashing it this coming year for the next budget? These are all hard questions, and I, I need answers to those before I want to commit to say that, of course, we don't have a dog in the hunt until this is done as a referendum. And I know that you're required by law to go to the people with a referendum to ask for the sales tax versus property tax, which you could vote, vote at the county level. Then also, I want to know, I'm concerned, and I've heard from various people as well, how this will affect the local businesses, especially our small businesses, and our tourism as well, those dollars, because that's a sales tax increase. We always talk about government and their involvement in quality of life. You know, people come to our cities and our counties here because of our, our quality of life, our, our jobs, the quality of those jobs, the schools, the quality of the schools. But also, I have to ask at this point, what is the job of government and the quality of life? First of all, it's hard to define quality of life, so we throw that out there, but we really all may have different views of quality of life. But then I think, as a fiscal conservative, and as a conservative on many issues, I have to actually say, what's the job, the role of government in our quality of life? Where do we draw the line? Isn't quality of life up to me? I also believe that we have to, as a city and as a county, address those issues. We can't just leave them out. I mean, we need our parks, and we need these, these other things that all funnel into quality of life. But these are some questions that are always floating around, and I think when this issue came up, I started to ask myself some hard questions. And I've heard from some constituents as well, asking hard questions. But the bottom line question has been, what is the county doing before going to a, in order to address the school needs, what is the county doing, what are the county commissioners doing to address these needs before coming to ask for a sales tax increase or property tax increase? What, out of the box thinking, what hard decisions, what hard discussions have they had to reduce your budget?
Let me see if I can surround my arms around all of that.
I know it's a lot.
First of all, again, and I'll benchmark it just for the last 10 years. In the year 2000, the total budget for Williamson County Government was $179,000.
Yeah.
Seven, seven, 179 million dollars. Out of that, schools received 102 million, which was 57%. County government at that time... County government, at that time, was receiving 42%. I'm rounding off. Fast forward to this year's budget that we're currently in, 10 years later, the total budget represents 362,914,000, 200, 362,914,000 dollars, a million dollars a day. The schools are receiving 233,500,000 dollars out of that budget, which represents a 64% of the total budget. So in 10 years, the schools have gone from 57% to 64%. That is the operating side. The debt side is one that gets lots of discussions when you're building school buildings. And we opened three last August. We will open two this August. An average price of a school is 50 for a high school, 35 for a middle, 25 for an elementary. The line share, the budget, I didn't make these rules, is paid by the county. So all of the money that we borrowed to build the schools, the county, the county commission has to approve, and they have to show that in their budget line item, not the schools. If you took the 64% that they're currently getting in the entire budget, you're running government, you're running law enforcement, your court systems, solid waste, everything else out of the remaining dollars to throw the debt, the debt's going to drive it up to about 72%. So we're running county government on 28% of the total revenues. Not complaining, we've done that. What have we done over the last few years, you ask? Starting in 2002, that's the benchmark, because that's where I'm going to be evaluated, and all of the county commissioners. Operating in 2002, zero. Operating in 2003, minus five. Operating in 2004, zero. Operating in 2005, zero. Six, zero. 2007, zero. 2008, zero. 2009, 10, give me 10% back. And in this year, zero operating budget increase. So we've had, all these years, plus an option, but we encouraged it to give us another 10% back in 2008, '09, as a voluntary method. So we have had zero operating in the last eight years, and actually, we've reduced it 15%. That's what your county commissioners have done. On the salary side, 3%, 3%, 2%, 3%. Those numbers are indicative every year. We did not give a raise two years ago to our employees. We did give them one, and the current year, we're in at 2%. The guidelines for this year are the same that they've been for the last three years. You get zero for operating, you get no new people.
Zero salary.
And zero salary until we get to the finished product of this. We don't have step systems over in our county side. You've heard a lot about the health insurance. We're a self-funded plan, we pay $10,000. There's a lot of room for improvement, but we've eliminated some things, but we do have $10,000 per person. We take care of theirs, too. They feel, they do budget for that. So we're self-funded in a lot of these things. We do deliver, I think, Alderman, a very solid program to the citizens here in Williamson County. That's not to say that, at the same time, we're growing. The population growth from 2000 to, just to hear in the next few days, is going to go from 126,000 people in the year 2000, to a little over 185,000 in 10 years. But on the other hand, you and I, Eric and the mayor, and the prior mayor, he may want to come back after T-Dots this year. But we've all, we've all enjoyed some significant growth in our community. You've done things with us, not always in total agreement. We've done things with you, not always in total agreement, but we have a lot of good jobs that we've brought to this community. You provide a lot of things that we can't provide, but our job is public education. But we have a lot of things that we do together. I think the county commission has demonstrated that. I think they have sent the message out. Is there room for improvement? Absolutely, there always will be.
Go ahead.
The, as I understand it, the request is to, there's a straight line between the money that the cities would forego and debt service that is directly related to school capital investment. Is that correct? So this is not a request that is made to cover operational expense? This is basically buildings, school buildings?
Correct.
Okay. And just for my own edification, the three schools that were built last year, opened last year, and the two that will be built this year, where are they?
One is currently under construction in the city of Franklin. It's Clovercroft Elementary School. The second school that will open in August is in Spring Hill, that Summit High School. Last year, we opened Perry Creek in West Haven. We opened Spring Station Middle School in Spring Hill. And the third one was, where was it?
Allen.
Allendale in Spring Hill. Thank you.
Okay, so, three in Spring Hill and two in Franklin.
That's great.
And I take it that this request to connect the dots between this, we are talking about a temporary thing, right? A beginning and an end.
Absolutely.
And not a, and not a beginning with a hypothetical end that becomes an ongoing situation, right?
Your city manager made that very clear to us.
I just, you know, we're on, we're on live TV now, so I just want to make sure that we're on the same page. And the connection, I gather, will help retire a specific capital debt in this timeframe?
That's great.
Okay.
When you say specific capital debt, of course, most of our bonds are 20-year bonds.
But you have a spike in here, which you need to help soften.
That's what we're looking at, is that spike, yes.
Okay, so you need help to kind of shave the tip of it off and keep it manageable.
That's correct.
All right, and you're forecasting that that's something that you can accomplish with five years of reallocation?
Yes, sir.
All right, so if we were to make these understandings, then you'll hold yourself to that, and we won't be having this conversation in a couple of years, where the city gets a black eye for looking like we want to take it back.
I think that's why we have inter-local agreements, and we put it in writing, and all of our attorneys would have to...
Well, nobody ever reads those things. I'm, I'm honest, I mean, I'm, I don't want, I don't want, I want to be a good partner in these things, okay? I mean, the city, you know, it could fairly be said that these school issues are obviously driven by population, and the population is obviously where it is. Now, I wish Spring Hill had a larger check to help with this, because that's where the schools, the most recent schools have been built, but maybe it's unfair to look at it just in the last five schools. Maybe if we went back over the last 15 schools, we'd see, we'd see what I thought the answers were going to be, which was, most of them in Franklin and Brentwood, where the populations are heaviest. But aside from that, I want to be a good partner in this. I just don't want to wind up with a future board confronted with a political dilemma, when that future board might be looking, because we have to do five-year, and 10-year, and 15-year forecasts as well. And if the county commission initiates a process that results in a referendum passing for this, that allows for the raising of sales tax permanently, and a temporary agreement is made, I just want to have an understanding that it's a temporary agreement, and not one that, that will wind up becoming a political dilemma for anybody. You know that you're addressing a five-year problem. We know that we're, that we're helping solve that problem, but also that the city can make plans of its own on revenue projections that include these temporarily waived or forgone revenues. You understand?
I understand.
Okay.
Alderman.
Well, yes.
Well, looking out, we see the county commissioners who have part of the city of Franklin, and I see them shaking their head in agreement with what's being said. And I think the referendum itself, well, the inter-local agreement would resolve, it would resolve my concern as far as a five-year plan, or whatever it is. If, given the choice personally between the sales tax or property tax increase, I know which one I'm going to vote for, so that's, that's the case there. But I, you've got a, you've got a half a percent increase. You're wanting the, you're wanting the half of the half, which will be a quarter, I guess, from the cities to go against debt service for the county, for the county school system. Part of that coming back to the Franklin Special School District, do you know what part that would be, and what part of percentage do you give that amount? Alderman, we're having attorneys look into the second half of that. The first half that automatically goes to schools would automatically be split with the Franklin Special School District. The other half, that essentially is yours, it's the city's money, and if you choose to give it back to us, there's a question of whether there's any requirement to give the Franklin Special School District any part of that, and I can't answer that tonight. My initial answer is no, you're making a gift to us to pay debt, it's not going into school operations, but we would have to have the attorneys look at that.
Okay. But on the sales tax, generally, the cut is about 10%? Is that...
Approximately, just over 10%.
The school entitlement.
Right. The first half.
So it's 90-10?
Roughly.
Yeah, what's earmarked for schools from the sales tax?
Martin?
Yeah, I'm correct, am I not, in saying that the, in five years, the increase won't go away, but what's going away is just our contribution to you.
Yes, ma'am.
And then that contribution comes to the city.
As...
Fully.
The agreement we would make would be that, exactly what Dana said, that there'd be no misunderstanding. I'm not saying I can make him feel totally comfortable from the political side 100%. I don't, I'm not that, I'm not going to sit here and say that. The commitment, whatever we can work out with you all, that money would go away, then you would have access to that, in this case, $5 million, multiplied as our county continues to grow, and people go to the mall and the other areas to shop.
A question for you. What's your, what's the unreserved fund balance right now for the county? What's the current percentage requirement?
While David is looking that up, that Williamson County enjoys the same success that Franklin and Brentwood does, and that we are the only Moody's AAA bond rated in this immediate area. I'm not sure how many cities there are in the state of Tennessee, but we're the only county. Now, Hamilton County is getting close to getting their Moody's AAA bond. There's some 50 of those bond ratings throughout the United States, 51, 49, but it is very imperative that we always maintain the ability to borrow money at the most favorable rate, because I don't see Dr. Looney's school numbers going down anytime soon. Dave?
We're estimating at the end of this year that our fund balance will be about $65 million. Now, what you have to understand about that is, we have several funds in the county. We have the County General Fund, we have the highways, landfill, we have the schools, and the two debt service funds, and all of those carry part of that fund balance, and none can be used for the other. In other words, I can't take the $10 million highway fund balance and fill schools with it. So that's a large number, but it's divided between all those funds. The County General Fund is estimated to be around $27 million at the end of the year. The schools are estimating about, estimating about $15 million, but they're also estimating that they would need to use every penny of that to make their budget. And they are required to carry a 3% fund balance, so they would be seven and a half to eight million dollars short without any additional revenue.
Alderman Peterson?
Many people have made comments already, and I guess my part would be, I do think, as has been stated, that it would be important to dedicate the part that the city yields to a non-recurring expense there, which would, not that you won't have recurring building anymore, but, but just to handle that. It's my understanding that there's been discussion on the projections that we would not be releasing our full $5 million every year in those five years. So in some ways, it would also take a little of pressure off of the city of Franklin to, on its having to increase property tax also.
I understand that you all will probably get back together and try to craft something that's helpful to the schools. I give you my commitment, that I will take to the county commission, that the sales tax dollars that are generated in the county, and there aren't many of those, that are generated purely outside the municipality, will be dedicated back to the schools also, because, you know, we have a few businesses in the county. Grassland has some that's in the unincorporated area. Henbeck Market, I hate it, can't wait for them to get back online, because they are definitely in the county's jurisdiction, but there are very, very few. David tells me we've got somewhere in the neighborhood of a couple hundred thousand dollars, that all this generated in sales tax inside the county, outside the municipalities. We won't make this name.
What do you mean Huff Store at Burwood that generated that budget?
We, we're very appreciative of Huff Store, and I encourage you to go down there any time you can.
I guess my final comment would be, is that obviously, all the sales tax that's generated inside the city of Franklin is not generated by Franklin residents.
Amen.
Obviously, very much of it is generated by people who live in the county and don't live in the city of Franklin, or maybe even live somewhere else, not even who, who, who if they, if this passes, and they are paying the sales tax, would not get, you know, those people that live outside the county really wouldn't get anything back from it, other than just enjoying coming and spending money here. But that, that part of it makes it more important to me, and the schools here are definitely one of the great selling points of moving here, and as a, they are a big part of the quality of life that people enjoy by living in Williamson County and in Franklin.
One last question. Is this referendum going to coincide with some existing...
I was asked that last night, Pearl, and I need to tell you, if you're running on the ballot, you don't want anything else on. But I do not make that opinion. I don't make that judgment. There are two elections in the month of May, one of them is in Spring Hill, and the other one is in Brentwood. They don't happen to be on the same date. So the election commission will make that decision when to, if the voters pass this, then they'll make that decision, excuse me, if the county commission makes this vote on Monday night, we will get with them just as soon as we can, and the county, and the election commission will take care of that.
Dana, maybe Spring Hill?
Any other questions? I'd like to, if I could, offer the opportunity, any of the county commissioners, one of them, to make a comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
We have a citizen that wanted to make a comment, and if we could go ahead and, come up and sit down, and, thanks, guys. We have an opportunity to...
No stress, no stress.
Thank you. It was kind of fortuitous that Dr. Looney is here tonight, because I have an issue that's not on the agenda, that I'm hoping will either make it on another agenda, or you can handle it internally. But this is regarding the landscaping of Clovercroft Elementary. You might, some of you remember my face, I was one of Clovercroft Quarter Neighborhood that fought the school, and we were promised at that point, I don't know if y'all remember, that there would be some adjustments made to the landscaping in the back, because basically, sorry, my printer is not very good, neither is my camera, but there's basically a small-sized Tennessee mountain behind the school, where there's currently a ton of landscaping. I emailed Mr. Fortney about this, and, sorry, he basically said that, it kind of, I don't know if it sounds weird, but even though Williamson County, and Dr. Looney and them, said they would be willing to work with us on the landscaping, and all the heavy landscaping in the back, and move it to the front, it actually seems like, according to Mr. Fortney, I have this email, it says... email, it says, "It has been designed in keeping with the city of Franklin requirements. All buffers, including the ones at the back of the site, were required by the city of Franklin." And later, he says, "It would have been my preference to see the buffer at the back of the school reduced or eliminated, however, we were not permitted to do so." So it seems like we need to come to the city of Franklin and see if there's something you can do about this. I mean, this is just one little tiny part of the very dense tree line that already exists. I mean, this is kind of farther back, but it literally is a little mountain of trees, so it doesn't really make sense to have all of the landscaping at the back and nothing at the front. So I have, again, printer issues, I have some of the, can you just maybe kind of share these right here? Sorry. But basically...
Take your time. We're first here. No, I think she should hurry up.
Two of them in six weeks. Yes. So anyway, you can tell, what I've highlighted in orange at the back, that's basically this mountain that you see. And we have 162 trees, I didn't even count the shrubs, that are lined along the back, this mountain. So there are only 29 trees along the front, and those are also in orange, and they're all deciduous. So I don't know if you've ever seen ravenwood and kinrose, which are prime examples and right in the same area as Clovercroft, but they are densely populated with all evergreens, which is really nice, because we moved here from Arizona, really with the lure of the rolling hills and the, you know, just the nature and the aesthetics of the horse property. And we have horses directly across the street. This is actually our property. So we would just like to see that the aesthetics continue to be as they were before, or as best as they were before, and blunt this building, you know, as best as you can with evergreens. If you have 29 deciduous trees, and actually of those, only six, as you'll be able to notice, in the orange, will actually block the structure, which I've put a box around. So everything is to the back, most of the evergreens, there are 288 evergreens in the plan, most of those are actually along the sides, which is appropriate, because those are neighbors that, you know, residences. But we're just asking, Clovercroft is a beautiful street, long street, it always has been. There are bicyclists, and a lot of people actually take joy rides and Harley-Davidsons, but it's, it's just not, it's not as pretty anymore, and we would just like for that to change.
We could, we'll just send it to staff and let them...
We had had an email exchange last week.
Are you Mr. Fortney?
Yeah, I'm Mr. Stuckey.
I'm Mr. Stuckey, okay, thank you.
And so I had asked staff to look into it a little bit, I don't know if there's anything we can say.
And it's not a monetary thing, I have to do a swap, so, you know, I know money's a big thing, so we're not asking for my money.
If I may.
Yeah.
I'm Vernon Girth, Assistant City Administrator, and have been speaking with our Planning and Sustainability Department. The real reason here is that there are several utility easements that run parallel to Clovercroft Road, and the utility companies don't normally allow any types of plannings within that. Maybe up near the building, there may be an opportunity, but the school system, and we have worked with them very closely, and they've been very cooperative, to definitely meet our standards, but that's really the primary reason. And instead of getting details here, I'll ask our landscape planner to talk with you and explain that further, if that's okay.
That would be great, because we actually have the same easements along the front of our property that the school does, and we personally are doing a dense population of evergreens by the end of the year. And we've only been told that we have to back up three feet. So as you can tell by the yellow in there, there's a lot of sod where there should be enough rain, and at the very least, a plant where you have 29 deciduous, at least, at the very least, exchange the 29 deciduous for evergreens. And then on top of that, it would be great to add evergreens where the yellow is.
Again, I'll ask, we'll get in touch with you shortly.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Eric.
Good luck, keep us informed.
Thank you.
Nice names would be Eric and Vernon.
Thanks a lot.
Next, we're gonna go to Monique McCullough, discussion of proposed grant program for special events.
Let me just say a couple words to introduce it as Monique comes up. One of the great things, one of the special things about Franklin is the community festivals and special events that we have, the large-scale community events. And we're thrilled that they happen, and we want to look at ways to continue to support them. And the city does a lot to outwardly support them, but one of the hidden components of that is the many city services that are engaged in helping make those events happen. And event organizers traditionally pay for police overtime, but many, many of the other city costs involved in supporting those events get rolled into city budgets. And we're by no means complaining about that, but we want to recognize that. And one of the ways we thought about looking at recognizing that and also providing greater accountability for us for those costs, as well as provide a mechanism to enhance special events going forward, and identify what's good and what works with those events, and try to build on those, was a program that Monique and the special events team have worked up. We have taken time to discuss some of this with the various event organizers to get their input, and I'll let Monique kind of take you through what this is. And it would be something we would look to build into future budgets to help provide for that direct link for what we do, but allocate those dollars based on the impact of those events. And I'll let Monique take you through the specifics.
As Eric said, you know, we didn't want the event organizers to feel like we were taking something away from them. This is something that we hope will not only help them, but also help us keep control of our costs and keep track of our costs, and still support these worthy community events. So you have in your packet an example of the application for the grant program. So the organizer will complete the grant application based on the deadlines that we provided. And we did the deadlines so that events that are earlier in the year don't suck up all the money before the events start at the end of the year. So we kind of staggered the deadlines, so, you know, we have different organizations applying at different times throughout the year. And then they're ranked based on promotion of tourism and economic impact, quality of the event, capability of the event, and community outreach. And then we'll do a post-evaluation, we'll give them extra points based on their post-evaluation from the event the previous year. Every member of the special events advisory team will rank the application or rate the application, will take an average score, and the event would get $50 per point that they've gotten on this application. And that money would be used towards our city in-kind services. We think that will cover most of the costs. We've talked a little about excluding the Main Street Festival as a signature event, because it is. I think when people think of festivals in Franklin, the Main Street Festival is the main one that they think of. So we've talked a little about excluding that one from the program altogether, we would just continue to cover those costs.
Or you could provide a additional direct sponsorship, because the costs are higher because of the scale of the event. And that way, you would sort of make up the difference in scale between that and most of the other events. So there's a couple different ways to look at how you might treat that event, just because the costs are higher, because the scale of the event is more significant.
And we would, you know, provide the information to the organizer, and they can appeal to the city administrator. And then after, if they don't appeal, then that's what they would be awarded. Police costs wouldn't be covered. Foot races and parades would not be able to apply for the grant program.
When I said, I wondered about parades, because they're often...
Typically, parades are only paying for police officers. They're not the stress on our overtime as the other events are.
They're just not as much. They have some of the same reach, but the duration and the nature of them is just not nearly as demanding as an all-day festival.
Do we not use solid waste for those?
Not typically for parades.
Normally, we don't have to do that.
We'll have our streets with the street sweeper.
Not to the magnitude of what we have to do.
Oh, absolutely, not to the magnitude, but we had some.
Lincoln Fest was pretty crowded this year. It was almost like the display festival.
It was. The only difference is that it's one day, as opposed to the two days.
I've got a question on the rush fee of $100 if special event application turns in less than 90 days.
That's something that we're looking at.
Is that rushed, 90 days? I mean, it's three months.
Right now, the ordinance says that it has to be turned in within 90 days. And the process that we go through now is that the event has to appear before our special events advisory team, and then they're on your agenda at 5:00, and then typically, the next meeting, they're on at 7:00. So the process kind of takes a while.
The reason for the 90 days...
So it's less than...
Less than 90 days.
The reason for the 90 days is because we used to have events, we used to have organizers come in and say, "I want to do this big thing in three weeks." And literally, the next week, we would get someone to come in and go, "I want to do this big thing next week." And we would literally have two events trying to lay themselves, you know, one at Pinkerton Park and one on the square, in three weeks. And we also had people coming in and saying, "Okay, I want to close down the square and Main Street for three days every year on this weekend." And what we ended up doing with passing an ordinance that basically said, "Look, you have to come in every year, you can't come in more than a year in advance, but you have to come in and file something more than 90 days out." Because we were literally having worthwhile events proposed a month out with multiple events, sometimes proposed at the same location. And just to try to get, I mean, to, I don't want to say reward, but just to allow some order to it, we made people, now, we have regularly overlooked deficiencies in that, in that, but for the most part, it's only happened once per event. And then they realize, because there's a panic, when the organizer, when the person who's responsible for getting the permit gets told you didn't file this in time, and then they have to go back and tell all their board members that, that generally doesn't happen but once. So that's the reason that we created the 90-day and the process, frankly.
That's understandable. I just had one question, the damage deposit, is that fluctuated according to the event?
And the parks is typically 500, and then for the larger events, it's 1,000.
Thank you, Monique.
Thanks.
Moving on, consideration construction bid award to Dals Brothers for the demolition of 306 Fifth Avenue North in the amount of $9,200. Any questions for Mr. Parker?
Nope.
Yep.
Consideration, construction bid award to Dals Brothers for the demolition of 11 Rebel Meadow properties as part of the Mack Hatcher Parkway Extension Project in the amount of $76,000. Any questions on that one?
I'm waiting.
Number 11, consideration of the dedication of easements on city property, Middle Tennessee Electric Membership Cooperative for the relocation of electric lines, electric lines for the Hillsborough Road Improvement Projects. Any comments or...
Will that be underground?
No, ma'am. This is all overhead. It's routing that was worked out to where we could eliminate some long, some circuits along Hillsborough Road. So at least initially, it will be overhead.
It goes back in. Doesn't that go back in, David, a little further off of the street?
Well, you got them out.
Because, you know, you see it, Margaret, remember we...
The Hillsborough Road overhead will be eliminated as part of this.
And the cost of undergrounding Hillsborough Road took the project from like 26 to like 40 or 40-some million. It was almost as much as the rest of the project, again.
But what we were able to do is get some relocation, rerouting of two circuits, and that's what this will do. And this is across city property. Of course, there's other properties we're getting easements for, but this is city property.
Other questions?
The lines that are going across Hollinsdale Farm, is that similar to existing lines that are going out there?
It'll be similar, it's just a different location.
Will these be wooden poles? Will they be...
They will be wooden poles, yes.
They won't be 100-foot metal?
No, no, it's Middle Tennessee's normal pole structures, which will be the wooden poles.
And this is just to provide electricity to, right there in the park?
No, this is circuits that go from the east side over to the west side. Right now, there's three circuits, Middle Tennessee Electric Circuits along Hillsborough, and we're relocating two of those along these routes, to keep from having to keep them all on Hillsborough Road. There'll still be one circuit on Hillsborough Road. It is not for any local, I mean, there'll be some local off of it, but it is their distribution lines, transmission lines.
Okay, but this actually connects to an existing line that's...
Yes, yes.
My question, is this the one that's going along 11th Avenue?
It does go along 11th Avenue.
What side of the road, because, you know, those houses sit right there?
I don't, I think it's on the house side. I think it's on the house side.
The house side.
Same side the opposed on right now.
So there's no opportunity to take them out of there?
No, that'd require more easements and et cetera. For the most part, in that area, we're getting...
Existing poles.
We're getting guy wire easements, anchor easements, we're not actually having to get the line easements.
Those sides, oh, yards are so small.
Yeah.
Moving on, number 12, consideration amendment number one, Hillsborough Road Intersection Improvement at Claude Yates Drive. Any questions about that?
There will be a light there. Yeah, there will be.
A traffic signal, yes, ma'am. There will be a traffic signal, that's one of the reasons for the splitting out this project. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I read this, and I get bogged down with all the words. When this is finished, we have...
...
96 West to Mack Hatcher.
When we complete...
Come on, the cross-up's too far.
When we complete the Hillsborough Road improvements, it will be completed from 96 to Mack Hatcher. This is not from Hillsborough Road to Mack Hatcher. This is, actually, the project is being done under two different contracts with TDOT.
Yeah, I know.
But it will be completed all the way. Now, they're gonna be probably staged at different times because of the requirements that were placed, that are placed on us when we have this type of a contract with TDOT because of the funding that TDOT is providing. So we have more things we have to do, which creates some problems of us getting it done in a more timely manner, so. But we already have a contract in place.
Simply, continue. That's answered my question. Thank you.
Any other questions?
One thing I will point out, this is on your next meeting agenda. We are still, Shawna is still working some clarification of some of the language, so we do need to get approval, but we would ask that your motion be that it prove contingent upon staff's approval of the language as clarified. It's standard TDOT contract, but we're trying to clarify some things to our benefit.
Moving on, consideration professional services agreement with Sane and Associates for the waterline relocation design as part of the Mack Hatcher Parkway widening northeast quadrant project in an amount of not to exceed $15,000.
And that's also at the time.
This is a time situation. We have to get this done, and I want to clarify or make sure you are aware of something that Mr. Stuckey asked me about this afternoon, in fact, that he did not realize. This particular project is being funded and is to go to bid in September. So it's to be on TDOT's bid list for September. We did find that out. I thought we had said that to you guys, but evidently, people just didn't pick up on it. But this is something we have to do, and we're having to rush to get this done. This is reimbursable. We will be bringing to you, the next meeting, a contract with TDOT on this, just like we did for the fiber optic, but they let the ball drop in getting this stuff done, so we're kind of having to rush on it, they being TDOT.
And we are saying it is from 96 East to Franklin Road.
96 East to Franklin Road, yes, ma'am.
And this cost gets reimbursed?
Yes.
And looks to bid in September?
Great news.
Very good news.
Number 14, consideration city purchase of property located at 331 Fifth Avenue North in the amount of $300,000.
This is a piece of property that was damaged during the flood. The property owner came to us and asked if we would consider purchasing this. We did bring it to the CIC committee, and the consensus there was to go out, negotiate, bring back a proposal to you. That's what we are doing. The property owner has agreed to a $300,000 purchase price. The appraised value with the appraisal and the review appraisal was $310,000. And so we would entertain that we go ahead with this purchase.
And this is one of the things that I had requested, come to the CIC committee again as a part... again as a part of a look at the entire area out there, because, you know, we're looking at this, but there are so many properties out there where they have not come back, do you want to say, in the last, what, eight, nine months since the flood? And I would really like to, I noticed that it said this was good until the end of the month. Is that right?
Well, this is not being, it's not on your next meeting. It will be at the 20th.
I'm just saying that I think it's...
And there is, you are getting a map showing the properties.
What properties is...
It's the old BP station right there at the corner of Mount Hope and Hillsborough Road.
The cemetery?
No, no. This is the, this is the service station between Mount Hope Street and Sonic.
It's next to the Sonic, yeah.
Okay.
The old flower shop building?
We already owe.
We owe.
That's the one you just went through about demolition.
Okay. There has been interest in a local merchant who has expressed some interest in using the parking lot and/or the building. The merchants who are currently at the corner there.
Yes, sir. They have talked to us concerning what is to be happening with the property.
Okay, well, we're doing a road project, and we're going to owe them some money, largely because we're taking up all their parking.
You, this board, has indicated to us last summer in a resolution that we are to proceed with the purchase of their property as a part of the project.
Okay.
Not just by right-of-way, but by all of the property. Again, this is shown on the mapping, so, yes.
Okay, I understand that. What I'm saying is that somehow, some way, there's been a disconnect. And if we, I just want the opportunity for those people, those merchants, to come in and have this conversation with us. They like where they are, they, you know, they've ridden out the floods a number of times, and they want to know whether or not there's an opportunity for them to stay put and take some parking, get some parking relief in the flower shop parking lot and stay put where they are. And if we're committed, if we're committed to that not being a possibility, then, fine. But I'd like to have those people have the opportunity to come in and express what it is, you know, why they want to do that, and what risks they're willing to take, and, you know, because otherwise, we're going to end up having to buy their property, relocate them, and go through a lot of, you know, other process that will dislodge, in one case, a business that's been in the same place for 20-something years.
That is kind of one of the thoughts about looking at the area as a whole and not looking at just a single piece of property there.
My request is specifically that we have, we put on the agenda for whatever meeting is appropriate, and get in touch with these people, and you know they are, and tell them we're going to have this conversation, if they want to come in and make a pitch, basically, because we've got a policy. We've given staff direction, but I'm not unwilling to reconsider that.
And I think the, Alderman Peterson, we're going to consider all these properties on the CIC committee first.
That's what I understood, would be a place that we could do it.
Okay, we ready to move on? One question, then another question.
Well, the property is between the old Alexander car lot and Sonic, is it?
No, it's, it is between Mount Hope and Sonic. It's the, it's the...
The property we're buying is the BP that is between Sonic and Mount Hope.
Where they removed the...
The demolition is the old flower shop.
Right. Well, that's very well, but the property that's between Mount Hope and Sonic was a station.
Lasted, at last, it was a BP.
It was a Marine.
Whatever it was. Because we were going to purchase a portion of it anyway.
Yes.
Or we purchased all of it for the street widening. I think that needs to be, that needs to be...
Yeah, we were going to have to purchase a portion of it, that is correct, and what, since they came to us, we pursued going and purchasing it all, yes. And we can use it for various reasons.
Do we have an estimate of how much our partial...
Good point, good point. How much was it projected to be the...
Well, I thought you were going to do that in committee.
No, but they have...
We had that one way.
No, but let's at least have that for the committee. How about that? The projected money that was going to be spent on it?
We have that.
Okay, good.
We have it, we have it some at one time.
If that's okay, if that's okay with the committee?
Okay, moving on, number 15, consideration contract award to Cheryl Morgan of Covington, Kentucky, in the amount of $30,000 for the initial 12-month term of service. Year for group employee insurance benefits consulting services for the Human Resources Department with options to extend the term of service for up to a maximum of two additional one-year terms. I do know we have some people to speak to this tonight, but I'd like for Mr. Stuckey to make some comments, and Shirley, and her staff, and then...
Actually, I'm going to defer to...
Let me, let me see. We did a request for proposals for consultant services to help us look at how we strategically position our bid for our group employee insurance program. And I guess the best analogy I would give you is this is similar to what we do with the financial advisor. We wanted a neutral expert to give us, help give us advice and help give us feedback on how we best position ourselves to get the best match for the city in terms of services and in the insurance market. We specifically wanted someone that would not be gaining a commission from a decision we made or didn't make. It's just like when we hire PFM, we just pay them for consulting. As a financial advisor, they get no benefit from a sale of bonds or not selling bonds or whatever we do, because they're not an underwriter. They're purely a consultant. And so, that was, the primary focus of this was to find a consultant that would assist us in this process. We had eight qualified firms submit proposals. We had a team evaluate those proposals. I actually happened to be part of that team, along with some representatives from Human Resources and Finance. And our purchasing department just sort of oversaw the process generally. And so, we reviewed those, and from that, from that evaluation and scoring, we selected Cheryl Morgan, a consultant that provides the services at a cost of $30,000. Felt that that was the best match, and our goal in any procurement process is to find the best service, the best meets what we ask for at the best price possible as well. So, meeting that combination of quality of services and response to the RFP that we provided at the best value as well. So, that's the process we went through and have selected Cheryl Morgan as that best match. Again, a number of qualified candidates, but felt that this was the best selection, and that was a consensus among the whole panel that examined this and spent quite a bit of time in considering it. You know, we did have a wide range of costs that went in, and I think best explanation I can provide for you is that there are a number of folks that operate in the market more from a broker standpoint. And I think a number of them kind of crossed into that level of service or that type of service, and that really wasn't what we were asking for. We're asking for consulting services. So, I think you had some of those types of services rolled into some of the responses we received. But I'm comfortable that we provided a very open, professional process in selecting it all, and selected what I think is the best match for us out of a good group of options. I'll let others from our team, if they want to add anything to that, if there's something I should have said that I didn't, please speak up, and we'll get to you.
Like Eric said, I think...
Candy's our benefits manager.
We did. We took a, we took a lot of effort in reviewing all of the proposals. Again, like Eric said, we did have some qualified candidates that participated, and, you know, when we all met together as a group, we felt in the end that Cheryl Morgan best meets the city's needs at this time.
Questions, Alderman?
Well, did this come through?
No. Didn't come through finance and budget.
And that's in front of you now? We didn't have a meeting in time to do this. We needed to bring it to you now.
It wasn't at our committee meeting.
Who, I guess...
This is the first appearance.
Who authorized the...
It's in the budget. We budgeted for this because we knew we were coming up on our renewals or the expiration of our existing agreements. So, we budgeted for this, and we're trying to put this through tonight because of the timing of moving forward on the bids that we're going to need to do.
Yeah, why is it coming to us so late, though?
This is when it's prepared. This is when we're able to pull everything together and get it to you.
What are the expiration dates on our other, what are the expiration dates on the other products?
July 1. July 1. And I do apologize, part of this might be my fault. I've been out, and I should have probably started it earlier.
This is as quickly as we could pull it together. So, this is where we ended up, but it is a July 1 expiration.
I'm still, as the mayor, sort of calls it by the wide range. I know you mentioned that the understanding of the RFP. So, wasn't clear?
You see excerpts of the RFP. I think it's fairly clear. We were looking for consulting services. You know, it lends itself for folks to interpret that or to try to come in low or do whatever. I can't speak to why the wider range. I think we tried to balance inappropriate costing, and cost was a factor, along with somebody that clearly understood what we're looking for and could work with the different aspects that we needed to work with in the process.
I just want to put on record, we had three, I guess Williamson County firms that applied, and for some reason, their range were so wide, I would think these people who are right here in our back door would have a better understanding of what, I'm just looking at employee security out of Brentwood, Gallagher, Drury. Those were just three that jumped out at me, that are local folks within our community, and they did not know the, what we were looking for, or they did not respond in the way that we had requested.
No, I think they all responded. We just evaluated the quality of the response with what we saw as the need. You know, I think we provide in the process an opportunity for folks to ask questions. That's built into the process. There's a timeframe that you can ask questions. We answer the questions. We share the answers back out to everybody participating in the process so that there's an equal playing field for everybody that's going to propose. We actually only had, I think, one entity ask questions, and that was the Drury Group. Did we have two? We had one other one ask questions. So, we tried to respond to those as best we could. You know, I can't speak to why others didn't ask questions or the nature of those questions.
Well, my real focus here definitely is that I would like to think that we could find, in our own state, someone that can, you know, I believe in taking care of the local folks if possible, but if they did not meet the criteria, then that's a different thing.
It's not, you know, it's all a matter of what's the best match.
Yeah.
But we don't build into our procurements a local preference. We build in a preference for the lowest and best.
Yeah.
Because we think in the long run, that's the best value to our citizens, and sometimes that's a local firm, and sometimes it's not. That's the nature of how we're built to do this, and if the board wants to provide other direction or other programs, some cities do a local preference or provide points in the process for a local entity. That's a whole other policy discussion. But our drive is primarily, at the end of the day, lowest and best, and we try to make the best judgment we can.
Alderman, find him.
If I understood you correctly, Mr. Stuckey, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, but it sounds like there was sort of an implicit penalty for those who did something other than strictly consulting, if they actually had a product for sale. Was that clear in the RFP? I think it was very clear we were asking for consulting services. Okay. And that we weren't looking for a brokerage service. That's a different option, and that's a decision to be made later in this process, quite frankly. That's to follow, and that would be, one of the options we'd look at is someone who might provide a broker service, or we can do direct bid, we can do both and compare, you know, that's sort of an option and something to come. So, we really didn't want to get into where we were essentially taking on a broker when we asked for a consultant. Okay, but... I thought it was clear we asked for a consultant. Well, I'm not saying it wasn't clear that we asked for a consultant, but if part of the criteria was almost an inverse penalty to people that were not only consultants but brokers, was that clear in the RFP, that we did not, at this time, want to be engaged in conversations with people who were consultants and brokers? Well, we wanted to make it clear that we were getting consulting services. Those could be provided by somebody who also may work as a broker in some other setting, but we wanted to make sure it was clear the nature of the service we were asking for. We didn't want to eliminate anyone from taking a run at the business, but we did want to make it clear that we were looking for strictly a consulting arrangement. And I think, I think that was pretty clear in the document. It's really about the service, not the entity itself.
So, the points, what Dana's asking, can I ask about that? Because what Dana's asking, is there any points that were not taken away or given because they were a broker and a consultant? Or, but of course, there's nothing there to indicate, no policy doesn't have it currently. We might want to look at having a point to say, you know, lowest and best and local, but that's another discussion. But you're saying that that, that point system, because I'm looking at the points here, so that really did not hinder them?
No. If you look at the RFP, points were assigned, 40 points to qualifications and ability to carry out a scope of service. 15 points were provided to their description of the work plan and their technical approach. 35 points, the fee, the level, the cost. And then 10 points for their completeness of the proposal and adherence to the RFP instructions. So, there's no strict points awarded or not afforded to if you were a consultant, if you're a broker, if you were anything else.
We had actually asked that the proposers actually submit to us the fee, a fixed flat fee, and if there was someone that did indicate that they wanted to accept commissions as well, that was taken into consideration when it looks at adherence to the RFP instructions. But there were no specific points taken away for being a broker.
Alderman, find him.
I'm not sure how this relates, and I wasn't on the board at the time, but there are probably members here who were. Several years ago, we pulled back in-house. Okay? So, what did we pull in? Is, are we now going back out for the, for any of...
I can address that, because that happened when I came. We bid out the first year I was here. When we did the bid, there were several people that bid Blue Cross Blue Shield. And we had no way in the bid, and our risk manager at the time bid it out, and I had been here about a month when we did it. And we bid it out, and it did not specify that only one person, one agent from Blue Cross Blue Shield. So, we had numerous bids from Blue Cross Blue Shield, from Hell Springs, from others. So, we looked at it, and at that time, I was heavily involved in insurance, and in conjunction with our finance manager, Mr. Truel, and our then-city administrator, we decided we could do it in-house. We did not have a local agent at that time. It was consociates, and they were out of St. Louis. So, we did not lose anybody that was local. We actually saved about 2.2, 2.5 million dollars that first year, and that's what we pulled in. We also, that first year, hired an outside consultant to do an audit and look. To be quite honest, we didn't feel like that was a profitable or a favorable decision for us at that time. We did not feel like we got what we had wanted, and we had discussed that with some of you all. So, we had not had one that we had been paying, and with the new health care reform and everything coming down the pipe, we felt like we needed to bid out for consultant this time to help us.
And you may have answered that. The last statement may have answered the question, because we pulled in and were able to analyze the bids and the benefits being offered, but now we're saying we're in a position now that we're not able to analyze and... now we're saying we're at a position now that we're not able to analyze and.
And it's not only that. We're wanting a consultant and if you'll look at the RFP, we want a consultant to help us with the new health care reform and what we need to do and what our next steps should be. Also, we've gone from like 400 employees before to now we're up right at 700 employees. We still have the same number of insurance staff. So, we're to the point, we're really needing some.
And if I can just add one more quick thing. Another big consideration for us currently is our retiree insurance. As you may recall, that one of our retiree insurance plans sunsets June 30th. So, that's something that we felt that we really needed assistance with this year to help us work through that and to look at long-term goals in relation to the retiree insurance as well as the employee benefits.
I just have a couple of procedural questions. Did you say you had something like 20-something proposals sent in?
We had eight that we evaluated. I don't know how many went out, but we had eight.
Not sure.
Said 28. Said 28. We sent to 28.
So, we solicited RFPs from 28? And we got how many back?
Eight.
Eight.
And how many then made in-person presentations? So, what was the, how did you get from eight to one?
We evaluated the eight and we had one that came out the top of that evaluation and that scoring individually and collectively.
Okay, so you just had?
We didn't know oral presentations. We did check references on the top selected firm after we'd been through that process to just validate and make sure there weren't any other concerns to keep us from moving forward with the selected vendor. And those references were excellent, I think. Can you tell?
Yes.
Have we done in the past, just not have people come and present?
I don't remember.
Okay. Well, to you, so maybe not on the board.
But, to a committee?
No.
We've had other RFPs that would decide about group or.
Typically, you let your staff evaluate RFPs and we may sometimes have a presentation or we may not. Just depends. None brings it to you.
I don't want to drag this out, but just take the handcoast benefits at $249,000. Why are they offering for $249,000 that Cheryl Morgan is offering for $30,000? Not obviously, I'd take the 30 over the $249.
For the night.
Generally, but what are they? Do you remember what they were? How would they have?
They didn't really give you a detailed list of what they're charging for each component of the services. So, that's kind of hard for us to answer. We can, I don't remember their proposal being significantly different than what we saw from any number of the other proposers. They just priced it in that way.
$49,000 for three years?
And it was not as detailed as some of the other proposals.
I can't tell you how they arrived at the price they arrived at.
They only got 19 points.
I can just say a couple of things. Of course, this is in hindsight, but the people have asked questions. Did this come before the Budget and Finance Committee? And just, for no other reason, just to say there was a plan to do services different from the services that we have been, that we have been using. And I mean by that, it was a different, it was a different outlook of the service that we're talking about. That would have been helpful and at least would have kind of warned us, I guess, or let us know about that if we'd come to the committee.
I think it is something we did, at least at some point, talk about in preparing this year's budget, that that would just be something we would need to do because of the sunset of the existing arrangements.
But, to tell you the truth, I thought the Pitching Committee had probably looked at it since we had not. I mean, that just came up, but they didn't, as far as I know.
Yeah, it was just built into the budget as something we knew we needed to do to be ready to properly bid it.
No, no, no. I know that, but I was just thinking that they, because there's several things here that involve that, that I had, I had not realized that no committee had seen it prior to the RFP going out.
Thank you all. I'm going to ask if we have people in the audience that like to make comments. They've come up and sit the microphone and give your name and.
My name is Ralph Drury and I'm with Drury Group, which somewhere down this line that you, they discuss and I came in, at least I was considered, I guess. I don't know, I think most of you know who I am. And of course, this is Charles Peregus, President of our company. And listening to you here has changed my entire comments to you. I don't know as the city knows exactly where they're wanting to go in this smear of things. Consultants, they're very good at saying, give me a watch and I'll tell you what time it is. And there's another little saying in our business, when you can't make it in the business, you hang a shingle out and say, I'm a consultant. So, with that said, I'd like to say that this disparity of $9,400 to $249,000 is a result of the difficulty in trying to interpret this RFP. One of the things we do when we sit down, whether it's consulting or whether we're paid by commissions, is to ask the company for us to discuss their short-term and their long-term goals. And I don't think any of that's really considered here too much by the staff because I can't see a consultant in Covington, Kentucky. Now, I grew up in Kentucky, so I don't know if you all know where Covington, Kentucky is. Across the river from Cincinnati, Ohio. That's a long ways up there. Now, take your own economical situation and look at it from a standpoint of, how many times am I going to travel down to Franklin, Tennessee for $30,000 during the course of the next 12 months? And I can tell you real quickly what that will be. And I look at the fact that we have here tonight, they might have left, but we had two or three other local benefit companies here that are capable of doing everything that I think you want here in the city of Franklin. And they didn't respond with a bid. We did it after a lot of discussion. We started to throw it in the File 13 to begin with because we didn't feel like it was written properly, that there wasn't a clear objective as to what the city wanted. However, we wanted to be included in some kind of process here. We didn't want to be left out and not meet the deadline and then we have, you tell us that you're not eligible for anything with the city. We've serviced the city since, well, for the last five or six years and I think each year we've either bought back the same rate with extended covert, I mean, extended terms or we've lowered that rate. We've even given some free consultation to Shirley on behalf of the medical plan. Charles just sat down with an exit interview on the chief of police because he felt comfortable coming to our office and then Charles explaining the benefits that he now has available to him in his retirement. And I don't see how this can be done from Covington, Kentucky. Now, I think if you look at references, the Drury Group has has a business at this county for the past 10 years. Charles, right now, has written the RFP, is that right? Request for a proposal, for their medical insurance to be shot. We have zero commissions in that plan. We're doing that because we have the life insurance, the disability, the other programs that the county has that we make commissions off of. And we're sufficient that we can afford to give the county that extra time. Charles has worked with the benefit manager there for some time. We have also worked with them in some of their technical aspects. We've got a poor grade for technology or technical and I'll put ours up against just about anybody's. Our software programs, our human resource, we have payroll services that, as I think, almost second to none. And we have the hospital, Williamson Medical Center. We have lowered their rates, same thing. They have zero commission in their medical insurance, yet if they call on us and ask us for advice on something, we do it. We've just recently taken over their retirement plan, $30 million retirement plan. We saved the hospital on that retirement plan and fees being charged to them, almost So, I don't know. When you look at this evaluation report here, one of them gives us, because we sent a three-optional plan in, on technical services, one of us gives, I think one of them gave us a nine or a seven or something, the rest of them gave us a three or five. I mean, we got technical services, we already have it up and down the board across the company. So, I have a hard time understanding the grading process and I'll let you know that insurance is a complicated product to begin with. And if you don't know what you're doing and when a RFP comes out of purchasing, we weren't sure whether you're buying a police car or wanting insurance. So, I don't know. I'll let Charles make any further comments, but $30,000, let me say this, that you're going to pay for a consultant is about $10,000 more than the commissions that are being paid to myself, full service and Houston Maron right now. So, you could have got the same service for $10,000 less. We bid 25. We were going to bid zero, but we didn't feel like you'd even give us consideration because it's a no-brainer for this part of consulting to sit down with you and talk about your short-term goals, your long-term goals, where you want to be here, where you want to be there. They talk about retirement. These are just things that has to be set around a table as you're doing tonight to discuss the issues and the problems that's facing you. And this cannot be done for $30,000 from somebody in Covington, Kentucky.
My name is Charles Peregus and as Ralph's already said, I work at the Drury Group half for 16 years. I am a taxpayer here. I am part-owner in two businesses and a property owner as well. And, you know, I look at this very simply. Here's a situation where my tax dollars that I spend here are going to someplace where there's services that not only myself and the Drury Group, but also other organizations in our own county or in the own city limits can do this very same job. You don't have to choose us, you know, part of this process and I understand the process is very important. You know, all of those are. But, the one thing that was commented on tonight by you all was concerning the interview of the groups. I can't, we won't even work with a carrier just because they give us the lowest number if we don't know that they can do the job and we have a relationship with them so that when there is a problem, I can go to them and get that taken care of. And, you know, looking at something on paper and how good it looks and how good it feels, this is not by an insurance online with GEICO or Progressive or something like that that you all are contemplating. You're looking for a consultant that not only, you know, can do the job, but also cares about the job that they're going to be doing. You know, as a taxpayer, as someone who has friends and neighbors who live and work for the city of Franklin, you know, those are the things that concern me. That's the reason why I'm helping Williamson County with their RFP processes. Ralph said, we're not doing that, you know, we're not doing that for free just because. We're doing it because we care about what's going on with them. And if we can help them, we will. And it's the same thing we can do for the city of Franklin if we just would have been asked.
Any other public comments on this one?
Good evening. My name's Paul Pratt Jr. Thank you for hearing me. I'm one of the owners of Full Service Insurance here in Franklin, Tennessee. Ralph and Charles have done a fabulous job explaining what needs to be done and what has to be done. As I sent the email to you all today, I did say that it's a thought and idea that you guys ought to come to some of the local talent in this area and say, hey, guys, we need some help. And I think you'd be amazed at how much you could get done for free. Spending $30,000 on a consultant, $10,000 on a consultant, when you have some of the most talented benefits groups, companies in this town and go outside, makes no sense. And it's a situation of when people like us who do this every day, we follow tax care reform, we follow it every minute, we have people that follow it all the time. And it's real simple. Pick up the phone, call four or five good local people who have a great reputation and ask them to help you. And I promise you, you'll go, wow, they've done a really good job. They've taken care of the city because we care about this city and we care about this county. And you'll be surprised at how talent, how much talent and rich this town is. And that's as simple as it can be. Thank you.
I had one comment. PJ, as you know, is in a full service as his company notates, but his specialty is property and casualty and he does that part, that end of it for the county, the hospital. We are competitors as such, but we work hand in hand and we work together for the benefit of our client to do the best job that we can get done for the full service that they need. And I want you to remember one thing if you can. Let's talk about your short-term goals and your long-term goals here in your benefits plan. It's been in our disarray ever since I've been involved here. And it, PJ, I'll repeat, it only takes saying Ralph, Charles, PJ, will y'all come down here and help us get on the right road. You have to meet some consultant that flopped out of the business 10 years ago anyway.
We're going to have to go ahead and cut the discussion off and we've got some other items to finish up before seven. Thanks for coming. Number 16 has been withdrawn. Number 17, consideration for resolution 2011-14 to reapprove a concept plan for Franklin Christian Academy for one year. Is there any discussion on that? Next is consideration of, thank you, consideration bid award to Waste Management Tennessee for West Camden Sanitary Landfill of Camden, Tennessee for the quoted price of $24.40 per ton for sanitary landfill tipping services for disposable biosolids, et cetera. Is there any question about that?
Same company.
It was $243, or, excuse me, $22.43 previously, yes. Okay, so this is $24.
$24.40.
$24.40.
Mark, would you write that sentence?
I did not write that sentence.
There's the teacher coming out. You'd have an F in my class.
I did not write the sentence. I will review sentence structure next time, I promise.
I want to see a diagram.
A diagram.
That'll be next work section.
Sentential word, yes.
Next is a consideration of 2010-11 Community-Based Development Organizational Contract with Hard Bargain Mount Hope Redevelopment and the amount of $55,000 creating one affordable housing unit, community development block grant. Any questions?
Same thing.
Next would be number 20, consideration proposed ordinance to be entitled and ordinance to rezone 4.24 acres from civic and institutional to regional mixed use for the property located at 109 Third Avenue South.
Mr. Mayor, as you know, this is a request by the developer, the applicant, we are the applicant. We, the city, are the owner and the applicant. This is a request by the developer to rezone our current civic institution to an MX zoning that would allow for certain uses and densities in order to support a hotel, a city hall and some residential and other uses within that block area. The rezoning is one item. Then there is a concept plan that comes along, which is the next item. The concept plan will lay out the concepts for virtually the buildings, the streets, but does not give as much information as you might get on a regulating plan. you might get on a regulating plan in terms of parking and in terms of other items that may be of interest to this group. But unfortunately, a concept plan does not generally allow for that kind of information. The developer is here, has a small, a short PowerPoint, if anybody would be interested in seeing that. Okay, you would.
Good evening. And actually, the PowerPoint is really the concept plan submittal if there were, is really, if there are any questions about where we are right now. And as many of you know, this went through Planning Commission last week. There've been a number of meetings with the city. And the most recent submittals have kind of clarified some questions that the city had asked related to stormwater drainage and some clarifications on utility issues. So, really here for any questions.
I'm going to start 10 minutes. I can't do this.
Let me ask, let me ask one question.
Go ahead and ask.
Until we, until we figure the funding out, how we're going to fund, pay for, whatever, I'm going, I'm going to tell you. I don't want to get too deep into this, that we cannot back out. I've been there before. I've, I've been into that before, but I don't want to do that again. So, and, and the other is this, as far as the likes and dislikes for, for what we've seen as far as the residential and the hotel and so forth, I want to make sure we don't get so deep into that--
Yeah.
That with the rezoning, that we cannot back out and look at whatever the concept plan is or whatever it is that we are able to do. So, that's my concern when we sit here on this rezoning, just as an overall broad-brush statement rather than getting into a great deal of detail on what's there, what's not there. I don't want to be, I do not want to be backed into a corner on this right here.
And I would, I would tell you absolutely, at this point, you're taking a very early step to, to rezone, to provide for the type of mixed use and the nature of the use that has been described through the charrette process and that's been brought forward. It is a frame.
It is.
The strokes that go in between on that canvas are still to come and you'll be very much involved in how that takes place and to what extent that takes place. But at this point, you're taking a very initial step to move the zoning, to align with the vision of a, of a, of mixed use in this area.
Alden Skinner.
I kind of agree with what Clyde's saying, that we really haven't talked about what the cost for the city will be. Here, here we're going to, we're going to give up prime land down here in downtown Franklin. We don't really need the money right now, you know. So, is this the best time to make this deal, essentially to sell city land? And nobody has talked about what the cost on the city side is going to be or where the funding will come from. So, as, as we keep committing more and more staff time, because this is our project too, you know, we go farther and farther down the process, but we're not even sure about where the funding or how much it's going to be and how it works into our overall debt.
Okay, go ahead.
I, I, I'm overwhelmed. I really am. And I don't really know where to start, but I agree with all these points. But I have the basic problem of just trying to vote on a rezoning when I'm not comfortable with this look of the plan that we have, because the first thing that comes to my mind when I see, and I know this is fluid, I get that, but when I see townhomes facing loading docks and loading docks on corners next to townhomes, I'm not really comfortable with this residential thing at all. And I never have been. I think there's problems just waiting to happen with residential on this block. I don't know who in their right mind wants to be located right on the same block, right in the same spot as City Hall, loading docks, traffic galore, and hotels and people coming and going. So, the whole thing just is unsettling to me. And that's why I, at this point, I mean, I really do want to move ahead, because we need to be ready when we have a partner that we can go into this. I get that. I'm a pro-business person. I get that. Mike's got some legitimate questions here. And at this time, I just feel too unsettled with this whole thing. I think we need a special meeting, just so we can sit down and discuss this, not outside a work session, and get some better input for, for me at least, so I can vote on a rezoning. Tonight, I can't vote on the rezoning.
May I address that, just to, just to make sure that, because part of it is, as Catherine said at the beginning, right now, it is a concept plan and the regulating plan is the one that takes you through much more detail. So, right now, on the overall, what we're really saying is it is a mix of uses, the residential, the hotel, and the city hall with some associated retail. We do say, and what is included in the concept plan, is that there's a grand total of total building for both phases of 280,000 square feet. That's divided between 35 residential uses and it ends up, which is 104,000 square feet, 175,000 ends up being related to the more commercial uses, the city hall, the hotel, and the associated retail. But within the concept plan, there is certainly a lot of room for exactly the location of where those residential units are located. Most of those units, as you didn't know, but most of those units are on the side along Church Street. There are just a couple of units that are identified as the live-work units--
Yeah.
--that are along the parking garage. And I just, I just want to address that, because those were done with the simple intent of trying to make that as pedestrian-friendly and active as possible. It is not a sticking point for the developer that those residential units must be located in that location. But overall, for the concept plan, it's the idea that we would have no more than 35 residential units in whatever configuration on the site with the grand total of the 280,000, because it is at this point, concept versus regulatory, where we can get a lot more of that detail.
And I look at the roads there and try to get a truck in there to load, the loading dock. You know, there's just a lot of problems. And I know it is fluid, as we said, but still, there's, there's some realities got to come into it.
The question right now is, is the zoning, if you want to move the zoning from the civic institutional into a mixed use. There are far more details to be worked on, on how this would work. We don't have all those answers today. We won't have those for some time, because there's a lot of complexity to this. There's a lot of costs to figure out in terms of the actual development deal. You know, I think the question is if, if you're comfortable moving forward, the minimal step of zoning at this point.
Let me, let me zoom out on the Google map. Why are we having a conversation about rezoning right now at all? Not how many units, residential, or how many square feet, or, or any of that. Why are we having a rezoning question, conversation right now at all?
I think, you know, we're trying, I guess, from our perspective, from the planning perspective, to put that land use into place and to, to set this area for the type of development that we would want to see. It takes a long time to go through the process and it's really a separate issue from the funding issue. It's a land use issue that's--
Well, it is. However, if, I understand that it's different. However, this is not a situation where, say hypothetically, someone wants to build a, a cutting-edge medical facility and they need a demonstration of good faith, so that we can re, we rezon it, so that they might go raise the money. Okay? If we rezon it, we can still say no. So, if we're being told we need to take this step to encourage private partners to come forward and work with us, I'm not at all motivated by that, because if they're not willing to take my word for it, that I will rezon it when the time comes, then they are not going to be willing to take my word for it, that we will sell it when the time comes. So, again, why are we having a conversation about rezoning this piece of property right now with, with everything else being as, as, you know, nascent and, and unfair?